Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for showing up tonight. We know you're busy and we are grateful that so many people have showed up to help us learn what we can about the Civil Justice Gap. I am Chief Justice Bridget McCormick and I am very grateful to be joined tonight by my colleague Justice Sarah, who has been playing the leadership role for the court on our Justice for All Task Force. Justice Sarah has devoted countless hours to this effort already for the last year and has a lot more hours in him. He does this on top of his regular full-time job in addition to a number of other administrable segments that have been time-consuming this year, and I'm very grateful to him for his work on this in particular. We announced the Justice for All Task Force last spring to see what we could do in Michigan to come up with strategic and innovative ways to solve the civil justice gap. We know that eight out of 10 people with civil legal problems aren't able to afford lawyers. They're not only people with very limited resources, even medium-income people have trouble affording counsel. And that is not ideal in a system like that, you simply have law. And so, we in Michigan, at the Michigan Supreme Court and with our partners in the Legal Services Community and the State Bar, are working to come up with strategic and creative solutions to this problem. We are incredibly grateful to all the members of the Task Force who have also been working very hard. We will hear shortly from Jennifer Bethany, who has been one of those leaders from the State Bar Foundation. And I want to thank briefly the judges who have shown up tonight. The judges that sit in our task force can be the first to tell you how difficult it is for people who have to proceed in important civil cases without counsel, which happens quite often. So, I want to thank Judge Cynthia Arbott, Judge Mark McConnell, Judge Gino Salamoni, Judge David Perkins, Chief Judge Timothy Penny, Judge Adrian Hemar Johnson, Judge Kathleen McCarthy, Judge Noah Hood, and Judge Debbie Page Hood, all of whom have shown up tonight also on top of working a whole day. We are grateful for your presence here tonight. As well as our State Bar President, Dennis Barnes, is here tonight. Thank you for being here. And for our Presidents, Laura Getaway and Tom Crenshaw. Thank you very much for the leadership from the State Bar tonight. It is very much appreciated. And with that, I want to turn the microphone over to Justice Sarah, who can tell you more about what it is we're doing and why we're doing it, and then we will... Representative Carter is here. Thank you, Representative Carter. Thank you very much. I'm not taking it to Justice Sarah yet. First, we're going to hear from Representative Carter. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you all for coming and welcome to District 6. Prior to being a state representative, I worked 25 years through the sheriff's department. I used to be in charge of prenебod court, circuit court, criminal court, and I'll tell you, civil was the hardest one for me to figure out because, just like the justice just said, it's a different system. And there are a lot of people who have no idea, and I'll say this, court TV doesn't happen. So, I'm here tonight to learn as well, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be in the back. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I've had the pleasure and the honor to serve as the Chief Justice for more than seven years. Many times, in fact, most of the times, we agree on the topics that we discuss, whether it be the substance of the cases or the administrative rules. Sometimes we disagree, and hopefully we improve each other's vision, but we agree to disagree. But on this topic, we agree that we need to fill the gap on access to civil justice. We started about a year ago with the appointment of a Justice for All Task Force, and we went in and sought people from all areas of legal aid. Anyone who's interested in this topic, we've moved into judges of every level in court system. We talked to librarians, we talked to social workers, people who ran legal aid clinics, and we asked, "Where are you encountering people who are in need of legal assistance? How are you able to help them? And also, how are you able not to help them? Where do you send them? And are you aware of anybody out there who's in need of assistance, who simply doesn't get that help? Or perhaps people who are out there that are in need of assistance but don't even try to get help?" And we're trying to, just at this point, take an inventory to find out where the gaps are, find out where our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, and this is the information gathering portion of our committee work. And we appreciate you all being here today to help give us the information we need so that we can get together and by the fall of this year have a plan that we can put into action. So, I look forward to the opportunity to hear from everyone here today. And then...
Yeah, Jennifer Bethany is going to tell us about MichiganLegalHelp.org, and she will introduce questions as well.
And I think we have an additional judge, Judge Langford Morris, so thank you for coming. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Valpam, Executive Director of the Michigan State Bar Foundation. We really appreciate you joining us today to share your experiences with the legal system and coming and opening up to all of us to tell about the struggles and challenges you have faced trying to handle civil legal problems like custody eviction, debt collection, and others. We hope to also hear about good experiences you have had. We have as much to learn from good experiences as from challenges. If you're feeling too shy to come and speak, please fill out one of the comment cards. You can leave it in the back, or there's also surveys in the back that we would love your feedback. The reason we're hosting this town hall and doing the broader work is to learn more about all the resources that exist in Michigan and how good of a job they're doing to meet the needs of people. While we're here talking about the civil justice system, I wanted to share information about some of the free help available in the community. There are several legal aid offices in the Detroit area. Michigan Legal Help, a website, has a full listing of those. The Bar Foundation provides funding to Lake Shore Legal Aid and Michigan Legal Services. Experienced attorneys at these organizations are able to give you legal advice or represent in legal matters. You can also reach out to the Council Navigacy Law Line to get legal advice, and if the case falls within legal aid priorities, they can refer you to the appropriate organization. You can call them or apply online. Another fantastic resource is the Michigan Legal Help Self-Help Centers of Wayne County. They have offices in the Penske Building and the CAY MAC. Another in the light self-help center is located in southwest Detroit at the Family Alliance for Change with Spanish-speaking staff. These self-help centers can help you with many kinds of legal issues if you are representing yourself. They can also help with information and forms and answer questions about court procedures. Another resource is the Michigan Legal Help website, which is available online 24/7 to provide legal information and referral resources for a wide range of legal issues from divorce, custody, to expungement, name changes for small estates, debt collections, simple wills, and more. You can access it on your phone or on your computer at MichiganLegalHelp.org. There are also cards in the back if you want to take those and share that information. Michigan Legal Help has tools that can help you accurately and completely complete forms to fight things like evictions or debt collections, file for divorce, find out if you're eligible for food stamps, among others. They have a lot of educational material to help you learn about things like what to do if your child needs to be evaluated for special education. There are checklists of instructions that guide you through the process. There's also a guide to legal help where you can explain a little bit about your legal problem and get legal information and referrals to legal aid and other attorney resources. For instance, you can use the guide to find out if Lake Shore Legal Aid can help you or to find a self-help center in the area. Michigan Legal Help covers the whole state, so if you have a legal problem somewhere else, you can still find help there. There's also an events calendar that lists clinics that are coming up, things like expungement clinics and other clinics to help individuals. If you use any of these resources and have feedback for how they've helped you or how they could help you better, we'd love to also hear about that today in addition to anything else you'd like to share about the civil justice system. The goal of the Task Force is 100% access, and that doesn't mean that 100% of people get an attorney to represent them. That's not practical, but really, we're trying to build a continuum of resources, different kinds of help for different people and different problems that can make the court system more accessible for all. We feel like this goal is achievable, and the Task Force is dedicated to making that happen. Lake Shore Legal Aid, the self-help centers, legal aid clinics, Michigan Legal Help are for examples of very different ways in which there are organizations to help you. Now, I'm going to turn the mic over to you and get onto the work which we came here to do, to listen to you all tell your stories. If you'd like to speak and haven't yet filled out a comment card, the comment cards are in the back, and I'll be calling those names. And speakers will have three minutes. There's someone up right near the podium that will be taking track of time. Please do not share information or talk about an active case that you have in front of the court.
...as a lawsuit in working for Legal Services of South Central Michigan, representing tenants that are on a weekly basis in the fifty-sixth District Court's eviction diversion program. Those beliefs have only been reinforced by my work for the past four years as an attorney for the nonprofit Street Democracy, providing more criminal and civil legal services to homeless, which we use to inform our system change advocacy. Street Democracy agrees that the best way to ensure that access to Justice for All litigants is to have an attorney represented. And we know that there are a number of real obstacles to that happening quickly, if at all. And given those obstacles, Street Democracy believes that this Task Force's real opportunity to make effective change within its authority comes in the form of procedural justice. By making changes to how we approach procedural justice and the way courts communicate with litigants, the courts will help the average pro se litigant better understand how to navigate the courts, achieve better outcomes in routine matters, and preserve free legal aid services for those cases with more complex and acute issues. One way to achieve that greater procedural justice is by amending procedural court rules to ensure that litigants know what their rights are, increase the litigants' knowledge of the laws relevant to that specific proceeding, inform them of the potential consequences, and identify resources to help defend against a claim or mitigate its consequences. And from my experience, there are really two areas of procedural justice that most affect those living in poverty, that is housing and consumer debt. And an example of how procedural justice can be used in housing, you can look to the proposal to amend the Michigan Court Rules that Street Democracy submitted in 2017, which was endorsed and supported by a number of community organizations I'm sure here tonight, as well as the Michigan District Court Judges Association. It required that a local form be attached to someone's complaint in all landlord tenant matters, which informed tenants of their rights, provided sources for accessing relevant law, and resources for legal representation, as well as emergency housing and financial assistance resources. Unfortunately, that proposal was summarily denied, but it does represent ways in which the procedural rules can be modified to ensure greater access to justice. I brought a couple of copies for your honors as well if you'd like to see those. Some other examples of how court rules can be amended to provide greater fundamental fairness are requiring certain relevant information to be provided to defendants in civil cases, closer scrutiny of service requirements, requiring procedural and substantive findings to be placed on the record before issuing of default judgments, creating forms that use plain language that explain rights and possible consequences stemming from that court action. You can also create a separate court form for consent judgments that include a statement of the rights that litigants are waging, and then it also becomes a part of the public record, and it may affect their credit and ability to buy future housing in the future. Those are just a few examples of the creative ways in which this Task Force can implement procedural justice protections. And we strongly urge this Task Force to actively use procedural justice to bridge those gaps, identify the liability town halls, and protect fundamental fairness while giving everyone greater access to justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Angela Emerson.
I have Jail Task Force. So, I see it. It's Angela Emerson, and I'm just coming to speak as an advocate and as a survivor. I am a survivor of domestic violence and sexual assault. So, in this, and as it relates to Chirio as well, my assailant, he was initially, he was convicted of the domestic violence and the charges for the sexual assault, which drives. And now, because we now have a child together, he's levying parental rights. And so, every year, and not so long ago, I had to levy to get my PPO reestablished because I have to prove that I'm not safe around rapists. So, also, and with him, we have to fight now with parental rights because it's the same person who has the history of beating me and now sexually assaulted me. He now is trying to use the lack of accountability in the civil system to gain parental rights, which is really just him using that lack to put me in my order at greater risk. So, if there was actually lawyers in place for nothing else but the PPO and for the FOC portion of civil cases, because they do have the potential to become legal, if that portion was 100% able, I would have maybe been able to have a lawyer look at the case, be able to explain why a longer PPO needs to be embraced, and also how, even with having, I had to advocate very strongly, I had to have a lot of advocates in the community, and there's a lot of women who aren't like me, who are not going to tag up their maybe, come to Task Force meetings, reach out to that community organization. They're just going to be at the mercy of their victimizer. So, I was able to advocate with community organizations to get framework in place to keep me and my daughter safe, but not every woman or person who is experiencing interpersonal violence will be able to do so. And so, having already in place legal lawyers and not relying solely on legal aid because they're too, like, they're just, the burden is too big for them, in my opinion. So, allowing that, especially since there is a component where those two instances, PPOs and FOC cases, can become criminal, that there'll be 100% lawyer representation.
W. Fox.
Okay, hi. I do want to let you know, you probably already do know by now, that the forms for Wayne County Court Day Court do not match the state forms. This goes for a lot of the other counties. The state form, Michigan state form for the house sale, does have a line for appraisal of the home. Wayne County does not. And there's a lot of other forms that do not have, they don't match. We've been turned away from the counter. They said we cannot use a form from off the state website. We have to use the county form, which I couldn't figure out why until you get into legislation and the forms were found out. But the last time I talked to the Grand Rapids, I told you about the Uniform Military Guard Act. Well, what happens when they don't follow the Uniform Military Guard Act? Up pops a case we just got in of the Conservator Report and appraisal of, no, what's it? The, what is it, Randy? What happened? Oh, I can't even think of it. When they are going to, thank you, closing costs. When the sale of the closing costs was quoted, that the family is going to put in $4,000 for closing costs. Well, the Conservator Report now says it's $19,999 for the closing costs. And this form from the Conservator should be submitted to the VA. None of the forms of the Conservator's reports have been submitted to the VA, and none of them have been received attached. The first hired tenant actually has affidavit windows receipts attached. The big issue is, the first Conservator never turned in her final report that was due in October 2017. It's still not turned in. How can you go on to two more Conservators and not have her final report? I don't understand that. And I, so I believe that every one of these Conservator Reports since 2014 need to be turned in to the VA for investigation and audit. I can't mention names because it's all personal, but with the VA, you're not allowed to spend more than 5% of the ward's money. Like I said before, it's $100,000 gone already in one year. It's gone. And most of that is the sell of a house, and it's just unbelievable when you look at the paperwork.
Thank you. Jesse McKenna.
Good evening. I am a purle girl, an advocate, a litigant, and a childless mother. My children are victims of court-licensed abuse through the six circuit courts of Oakland County. Through what is unprecedentedly unjust, my children were given to our documented abuser. There is documentation as to his domestic violence and also his substantiated child abuse. Unfortunately, our access to justice has been circumvented by father's rights that have infiltrated the education and the training of our judges throughout the system, and also through the lack of access to attorneys and legal aid. Due to my living in Livingston County, I was unable to access legal aid through Livingston County because it was an Oakland County case. Could not access legal aid through Oakland County because of my residency in Livingston County. And the Family Law Assistance Project out of Oakland County refused to help due to the complexities of the case and the nature of all of the complications. Unfortunately, judges are trained to disbelieve women in their courtroom, which leaves us helpless. They are routinely disbelieving women, and even though our abuser admitted in court and swore and affidavit to the domestic violence and also to the child abuse, it meant nothing. What we are learning through this court system is that my children can tell the truth as they've been taught to, and it means nothing. Women can tell the truth, and we are forced to suffer at the hands of our courts and our abusers until our children either age out of the system, hopefully surviving through that system until they're 18, or until something else happens that we have no control over. I advocate extensively to revamp the training for our judges and our family court systems so that they can understand the complexities of child abuse and domestic abuse as pertains to our custody arrangements. I currently have spent a total of 27 hours with my daughter since May of last year, 17 hours of time with my son since May of last year, because despite working for two children's camps, having no history of violence, no history of substance use, I was deemed a danger to my children because I was threatening the, excuse me, the relationship between my children and their father. I was told that I was selfish for having stayed with my children in a domestic violence shelter run by La Casa when they could have had a stable home with their father. Our judicial system needs better training. We need financial resources to access attorneys to help us through these complex situations.
Vanessa, is it Fluker?
My name is Attorney Melissa Hunter. I am a solo practitioner, executive board member in the National Lawyers Guild, and I am not legal services. If they call me legal services, I represent people who have no resources or very little resources. And I have for years. There's very few people that do that because most people aren't trying to work for $2 an hour. But what's really outrageous is that despite the fact you can provide competent representation, you can still see the disparate treatment just based on the economic gap between the parties. And that is problematic. And I think that gap would probably be filled if there were more people that were able to competently represent you, particularly when you're dealing with situations like mortgage foreclosure, which I've done a lot of over the past 15 years. You have a significant influx now of these predatory land contracts. So, you're dealing with entities that are generally very large corporately, they're financially backed, land contracts, sometimes you have foreign investors, things of that nature, and unfortunately, your voice isn't heard. If you have no attorney, it's not heard at all. I see it for every day, especially the district court. You have some person trying to explain how they got into this predatory land contract. No one's listening, or you'll tell them, "You need to go get an attorney or go with legal aid," which is fine, except they're overwhelmed, and then they only cover certain areas of things. They don't cover everything. So, you have this vast gap of individuals who truly don't have access to justice, and when they do try to access justice, they don't have full access and certainly are not getting just outcomes. I understand that this is a forum where it's kind of back-bodied and information-gathering, but I think we definitely need to start looking at just the track record of opinions, and just statistically, I find it mind-boggling. You take a district court like in Detroit, how do you have 90, 95% of contested evictions and the tenants? Never right. They never have a prepared issue. They don't have any issue, no matter what's going on with the house, no matter what's going on, it's always the landlord. And that is a weak representation, which I'm sure many legal services attorneys, you know, justify to as well. So, we need to look at what are we really striving to do when we say we're trying to access justice for everyone, and what steps are going to truly be taken to make a positive impact in this area rather than just kind of utilizing some type of theory rather than actually moving forward so that people can truly access justice? Thank you.
Shontae Parker.
Good evening. I have to bear with you. It's a little bit cold. My name is Shontae Parker, and I'm the Managing Director of the Neighborhood Defender Service of Detroit, and I'm here to provide a public comment regarding the importance of access to justice for those most affected by civil and criminal legal systems. NDS Detroit is a public defender office that serves Wayne County, and we currently provide court-appointed representation to 25% of those charged felonies in the county. And in the coming months and years, we hope to expand our menu of available legal services for our clients. NDS is hoping...
Can I post the microphone?
Sure. NDS's holistic model is client-centered, collaborative, and community-based. In contrast to the traditional public defense office, NDS clients have an entire team fighting on their behalf, and we recognize that those legal issues aren't confined to this one area of the law. NDS attorneys are trained to recognize the implications of a case beyond their practice area, collaborate with team members seamlessly. One of our core values in providing holistic representation is to provide a balanced service, and to provide a balanced approach to the legal system. One of our core values in providing holistic representation is to understand our clients as whole persons. This requires us to address our clients' needs and transcend their criminal cases to integrate our client support networks into our representation and to nurture relationships with employers, social service agencies, and others committed to our clients' wellbeing. Often, we witness how collateral civil matters with housing, employment, immigration, family separation, parenting time and child support, benefits, civil asset forfeiture, and school suspension greatly impact the wellbeing of our clients, their families, and their communities. Our clients as whole persons come into our office with more than just a pending criminal legal matter. Often, they have spent years trying to survive under extreme racial and economic disparities, which have resulted in a lack of access to quality, affordable housing, reliable and fair employment, adequate healthcare and education, and family stability among a myriad of other compounding issues. To view our clients' lives purely through the lens of their criminal case is to practice in the vacuum. One client in particular, who previously held a well-paying job in the auto industry, came to our office because he had a technical probation violation for a nonviolent felony charge. Because of this criminal legal matter, he lost his job and his life, his life, excuse me, quickly unraveled as a result. In the following weeks, he lost his home, his vehicle, and parenting issues. He lost his time with his children. This client received this technical violation not because he was an imminent threat to the community or because he faced a new criminal charge, but because he didn't have a physical address to give to his probation officer. Because of our client didn't have a place to fall home, he was immediately brought to the criminal legal system. This man fought tirelessly against disability in his life by sleeping on couches and in shelters and providing one of the greatest assistance of others. If this man had counsel when he first lost his job, he would have avoided further engagement. And if he had counsel when he lost his home, he would have avoided further engagement with the criminal legal system. And further, if he had counsel when he lost his parenting time, he would have avoided that engagement as well. This single shift giving justice to all makes a huge difference to our clients. And we hope that the task force will begin to advance the transformative power of holistic representation. Thank you for the opportunity this week.
T. Sullivan.
Oh, yes. Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to say that there's a couple of aspects here as far as evictions is concerned. As a 40-year veteran trade public school teacher, I witnessed many, many evictions. Only I was at the battleground, at ground level, ground zero, where my classroom door would open up in the middle of the day during a lesson and the mother would come frantically into the home, enter my classroom, saying, please, I need to get my children right away. We've just evicted everything. I'm almost out on the front lawn and it's raining and we have nowhere to go. We have to find someplace to go to live. And of course, being the teacher on the ground level, we all kicked in to help. And we would get clothing, we'd find shelter, we would do anything we could to ensure that that family had a place to sleep that night. We would call churches and do everything possible, have a can, good collection. Immediately, we went into full gear. So I've been in that aspect as far as Detroit. And yes, they do need legal help because they have to go through the legal system in order to fight their predatory landlords, maybe falsely evicted. As well, I must speak for other counties, particularly Oakland County and other counties around Wayne County. They too are at equal battlefields with this problem of eviction. Only in the outer suburbs, you have illegal evictions caused by predatory servitors, court appointed guardians who pillage and raid the estates of the homeowner or who's living there, who's supposed to be through inheritance and a guardian conservator who's supposed to be paying the bills and taking care of the house. And they let it go until it goes into foreclosure. And then next thing you know, there's an eviction. And they too are out on the streets. I personally witnessed in the middle of winter, a person, beautiful woman who had a close head injury. Her father left her at home in Bloomfield Hills because she had a close head injury. She had a million dollar estate to take care of her, and it was gone through the conservator. One day, some Russians came along with the court appointed conservator and evicted her out of the house. I witnessed and photographed the entire event with all her heirlooms and family things thrown out on the lawn. Only out there, they don't have sidewalks, so you have no jurisdiction to keep them there for the time limit. So they told her, if you touched anything, you would be arrested. We will come back and get you. And what happened is I followed the dump truck. The next day, when they put everything into a dump truck, I followed that dump truck to see if we couldn't retrieve those items that were rightfully hers. And I followed the dump truck all the way up to the landfill in Pontiac. And I witnessed it dumped a great big hole dump, all of the things, their heirlooms, paintings, furniture, everything. Her clothing, she had no clothing, dumped in there in a rollover truck. And I was told by the person who owned that that this is common, that she shouldn't have paid her rent. And the evidence is now on. The people who moved her out of the home spoke Russian. And I'm telling you, they found cracks in the system out there in the other counties. And the oligarchs that used to be in Moscow are over here, and it's going to get worse if something isn't done out there as well as in the city of Detroit. Thank you.
Francie Novar.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Francie Novar, an attorney in Washtenaw County. 75% of my practice is family law. 30 to 40% of my practice is low income. I do most means work for low income and for low work as well.
Can you repeat your name?
Francie Novar, N-O-V-A-R. Victims of domestic violence and protective parents do not have equal access to justice, nor do they have access to equal justice in our family courts in the state. Our family courts are broken, and they need to be fixed. We know that fathers, the batter mothers, are at least twice as likely to seek sole custody than non-abusive fathers. They misuse the legal system. They continue to abuse the victims. The system is supportive of it in many ways, and they are successful and they are winning. Children who are abused are being placed with fathers who are abusive. Eighty statistically, 80 to 90% of victims are women, and the batterers are male. So I say women, however, sometimes, of course, men are victimized as well. But as several women have already pointed out today, the mothers are not being believed. The largest social science study out of Canada said that 89 to 90% of victims of domestic violence are telling the truth. Our judges, our friend of the court workers, our guardian ad litem, our lawyer guardian ad litem are not believing them. And what's happening is children are being placed in abusive homes. Mothers are fighting to get out of it. And what's worse than that is that not only are mothers being accused of being liars, but they're accused of being mentally ill. It starts with being a liar, then you're psychotic, and you're mentally ill. And by God, you can't have your child. You're a danger to that child. Victims are also being called alienators. If you have a good faith belief that your child is being abused, and I say a good faith belief, there's still a very good chance that you are going to lose custody of your child if you tell anybody. Now, these mothers are in a no win situation. When they come to me and they say, I've been a victim of domestic abuse. I suspect my child is, but statistically, I know that they're right, that they're telling the truth. I tell them, this is your choice. If you go tell the friend of the court worker that you've been a victim and you think your child is a victim, you might lose custody. If you have a very good belief that your child was victimized and was abused, you have to tell children's protective services. But again, you're in a no win situation because if they do not substantiate, which is very likely because the only witness is a five or a four-year-old child, then you're a liar and you're an alienator and you're mentally ill. So it's a no win situation for mothers. I think that some of the couple of the things that we need to do, we need to change the law. I practiced in New York for a period of time. They have a law there that says if you have a good faith belief that your child is being abused, the state cannot hold that against you. They cannot take custody away from you, and they cannot take away your parenting time because you had a good faith belief and told somebody.
Good evening. My name is Attorney McCasey, and I'm not here to write. I want to thank you personally, Judge, for allowing us to take our phones and computers into the courts on May 1st, 2020. I have a deal and a gap of reading and writing. So when I go into court, I am lost because I don't have my phone, and that's my life. And without Suri, I'm nothing. So she and I are girlfriends. But I want to thank you very much. I would like to also ask, I saw on part of the information that I collected that we were only allowed to have an attorney and then named off certain things. With someone having dyslexia, who can't read, it's like being blind, but I don't have brain. And don't we desert to have somebody representing us? So we can have someone read to us so we can understand what's going on? Because I don't want to end up getting in legal trouble because I didn't understand. And I'm not an idiot by any means. I'm not uneducated. I just have simple panic guilt. So I just wanted to thank you very much for doing that for me. And I want to thank you as well for letting me be able to get the videos of any kind of court case that I can take home and view. It's so important to me. So thank you again.
Deborah Lassley.
Was it Deb Lassley?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to pronounce it. Deb Lassley.
Hello. My name is Deb Lassley. And if you're this, and actually the phone issue is a really good thing because I actually sent something in because I have disability. They told us we can't, actually, social security disability of Slideroam, where you can lose your fingers and hands. And so thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Because they actually denied, and told me, no, you can't have any help with any of that. So thank you. With that being said, hold on. She said, my name is Deb Lassley. I've lived in Michigan most of my life. I'm a finance technician, accountant, is what I was at one time. I've been in the custody case since 2006. This is my second child. 15 years apart. The Lord had jokes in his pocket on that one. So what I ask is that the civil cases that involve family and children be a foundation of change because those tributaries all fell down into all the other courts, mental health, everything. And so with that being said, I ask a few items that because of everything that I went through. One, if you consider using Department of Human Services or DHHS. Two, do checks for. Because if you did that, you would have a form all online and it would be, each parent has to turn in their information. If they don't turn it in, then they have, you know, then they get in trouble. But parents just deny and don't do it, and then it becomes a big longer process. The other part is a reporting database on psychological issues with family court. Like a lot of women have talked about, I went through some of that. And actually, I have these wonderful like metal spikes that will put in my driveway twice going to court. And the judge goes, no big deal. You know, even even my police officers, like, that's just crazy. But that's what they did. So if you had reporting tools to watch and have checks and balances, you'd be able to follow up on these things. And psychological evaluation is a big one. I did turn a book back there that it's not so much men and women. It's what people who are abusing the system. And so it's like a book from Lundt and Croft. And it has to do with, you know, none of these women, but it's how the courts use psychological evaluations and don't help the families. The other part is personal protection orders. Yes, they are available, but also they can be abused based on how people use them. I had a stepmother put one against me, and I actually got it all removed because she lied. And she actually waited us to come to something. So then here we stand. And then later in the custody hearing, the judge goes, I had to put a PPO out there. How do you stop the court from abusing the things, the tools that are in place? The other part, okay, child protective services, statewide parenting time schedule, and thresholds that are like the best interest factors. And Family Law Appeals Court, you actually make the people have to sit all the way through. And businesses can, what would you say? Businesses can expense their time where we can't as well. Thank you.
Lillian Song. Did anyone else say Errie?
Diamond, diamond, diamond.
Is there any guardian conservatives?
My name is Lillian Song. Every year in the United States, 14 women are abused by a domestic abuser. 2% are of the abused as our women. 58,000 children are court ordered into unsupervised setting with their abusive fathers. An abusive related health care cost is $4.1 billion every year. Oakland County mothers and children are being deprived of their rights. A mother cried endlessly after being rejected by her teenage children because they believed she didn't try hard enough. A mother faces criminal charges. If she returns hometown home, Oakland County, even though she's allowed to stay abroad with her daughter. A mother pays every night outside her child's door, which was locked from the inside by her husband, while the small child clawed at the door trying to escape. Zeltian bent back fingernails and scratches on the door. An 11-year-old boy told his mother, if you want to visit with her anymore, because it was too painful to leave her. A four-year-old child guessed which way was to his mother's house so he can walk to it, so he can stay with her. They have horribly any trauma on top of the ongoing abuse from their abusers. And the mothers are forced to pay by the hour to visit with their children in a tightly supervised environment where they can only interact as playmates. There are some key factors as to why abused mothers and abused children still face denial of protection. Family courts prioritize co-parenting, parental access despite evidence of abuse, lack expertise about the support of adults and children, lack legal representation for victims, lack oversight, have gender-based stereotypes, and enjoy excessive deference of their decisions. Why do I know about this and how do I know? I'm a domestic violence victim, and I lost the right to nurture my only child. I had been supervised for five years and four days. I'm the mother who pays outsider's son's door. My son was the one who wanted to see where his mother's house was. I talk with and cry with others and children who are victimized over and over again. I care about my son and everyone else's other daughter. Why should you care? Domestic abuse doesn't end. It takes a different form in a different forum. Children are allowed to language in the very environment that harms them. If your budget is something you're interested in, there are $4.1 billion reasons. there are $4.1 billion reasons. And finally, how can you not care?
Dorsa Maggie?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dorsa Gia from Oakland County. I used to practice social work in Wayne County, but I went to Oakland County to make some more money. And boy, after looking back, I wish I would have stayed in this county. But however, I worked for an organization called Community Network Services in Waterford. I was bullied or harassed, changed files, to overbill and I didn't want to do that. So, um, I had mentioned that to an ER doctor. And what happened was I was retaliated against and thrown into a psychiatric hospital, West St. Joe's in Pontiac, Michigan. And I was there a week prior during counseling. And the purpose of that was to describe and hear reporting the healthcare flaw and the abuse that was born law with patients that I service. Um, I got out of the situation. I won seventy-seven thousand dollars. My attorney was corrupt in Illinois. He filed a lawsuit against St. Joe's Hospital, a law intentionally passed a deadline and that case got dismissed. Three years later, I had a family dispute between my mother and I. I called Iowa, went on her. And boy, I wish I would have never did that because Oakland County deputy misunderstood the situation. And he had taken me over to Conner Brown. And I called for backup because Conner Brown was a part of our retaliation back in May 2013. So my sister told Conner Brown about what happened to verify that I was not out of my mind and was a standard incompetent. So Conner Brown knew that, made me retaliate against me because I knew I was going to continue to fight about what happened to me. And they wrongly committed me to Hagan Hospital and told all these false lies on me. And no one called my family for backup to validate my credibility. And I went up in front of Judge Hallmark and told her this is a lie. And come to find out, Judge Hallmark was the one who got rid of the mental health record that was written on me in May 2013. And this was a horrible tragedy. And I used to work at Hagan Hospital several, seven years prior. I was drugged up as a mental patient. I seen patients being abused when they blacked it and drugged out of their minds. And they billed my health insurance for $11,000 for services I didn't need. I wrote a letter to Chief Judge Ryan to tell her what happened, supported six exhibits. And she denied the mental health record. I used to work with law enforcement, all the big dogs, all the biggies, you name it. And my friends as police officers, they said, Dorsa, this is awful what happened to you. You know, your, your name in the lease is supposed to say yes. They said, get that clear back up because we need you to get back out here and investigate. So this is what I'm going to eventually do. Not only that, but I thank God for Judge O'Brien. I, um, had to become my uncle's guardian. Um, John Young is a monster. He needs to be put in prison. This is what's happening to my uncle. And everybody that attended Dana Nelson listening tour in Oakland County, this is true what's going on out of the wisdom board. This is what they did to me, describing. He needs to be in prison because my uncle almost died. And I filed a complaint with Dana Nelson staff and met with them. And what did they do? They just closed up the complaint side, submitted insufficient evidence. And that was a disrespect to me because I'm an investigator, social worker, and you name it. But I don't go around bragging about my intelligence. And I want to get back to work because this is awful what's happened to me every time I speak up and get retaliated against. This is what happened to my uncle. And thank God for law because they sent the complaint out of state and the agents had cited poverty at Hagan that didn't stop to him. And I don't know what's going on with Dana Nelson staff, but I sent them over 20 emails. And I know when they go to work, they're like, oh, oh, what Miss McGee going to send now? This is true. I'm making a movie about it. Thank God for this lady here, Jordan White. I understand her pain and everybody else. Too much corruption going on in Oakland County. And the Attorney General office knows about it because I had a first claim complaint with the US government and my coworkers are not going to tell what's going on. This lady right here, Catherine Rich, got the roof home poles down in Southfield, Bible Leaven that tortured and beat up my uncle and did other things. It's not just these guardians. It's social workers and everything else. God bless.
Erin Lincoln?
Good evening. My name is Erin Lincoln and I have the pleasure of serving as the front of the court and the deputy court administrator for Wayne County Circuit Court. And, um, I wanted to just take a minute to highlight some of the things that we are doing in Wayne County, specifically at the front of the court, that, um, things that we're doing to try to address the access to justice issue. We have a lot of programs that we have going on that people may not know about. We understand that in family law, there are a lot of people who cannot get attorneys. Um, and don't, and, and also that it's a scary place to be, right? Nobody wants to come to the front of the court. So we actually have, um, on our website, we highlight a lot of our outreach activities that we have. We are in the community once a week, every week of the month, where we have child support staff who are there who can answer questions that people have. So we realize that when people come to the front of the court, they think they may get arrested. So we go out into the community. We have, um, locations at a UAW vote center, at, um, Livernoy in Southern Mile area. We go out to Starfish Family Services, Access in Dearborn, Focus Hope in Detroit, Team Wellness Center, and also Lisette. So we have also Spanish-speaking, um, staff that go out to offer help to litigants. And we also have, um, at Access, there's Arabic interpreters as well. So if people have child support questions, they can go, they can talk to the staff. The staff actually has, um, access to the child support cases at those locations. So you can actually get case-specific information. We can't give legal advice, but we can at least direct people to different processes and procedures that they need to get to, to take care of their issues. Um, in addition to that, we also work with the Lawton Parole Center, where we go to a meeting every month where we're helping returning citizens deal with their child support issues as well. One of our biggest events that we have in hold in conjunction with William Booth Legal Aid Clinic, of which Amy Romer and Rebecca White are here. Um, it's April 25th. It's from 1:00 until 4:00 at the Library, the Detroit Public Library main branch on Woodward. And we have attorneys who are there, legal aid attorneys. We usually have about 20 to 30 who can't actually offer legal advice. So if people come that day, they have child support issues, they can get legal advice from those professional attorneys. And there's often, people often get very happy actually because they have their issues, um, taken care of that day. So I just wanted to take a moment to highlight those things. All of the information's on our website. It's www.prerdcc.org. Um, there's a calendar there that people can look for these outreach opportunities. So, um, we know we're not perfect, but we're trying to make strides to help with access to justice issue. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you for taking the time of coming. My name is John Nichols. I'm the executive director of Michigan for shared parenting. Um, one of the, a twofold issue, um, accountability in family courtrooms. Um, I know Washington County does it. Any litigant in a family law courtroom can purchase a DVD. For somebody to purchase transcripts, they're very expensive. A DVD costs less than a dollar. Plus transcripts are not always accurate. You could have a word like "and" where it should have been "or", "shall" where it should have been "may", written in a transcript. And that judge goes back on his transcripts. Just that little fluctuation, that word can make a big difference in a judge's ruling. Also, um, we tried to pass a law in 2018, House Bill 4691 by Representative Runstad, that has put moms and dads and children in a level plea to end a divorce. A dad should not have to spend $30,000 to $40,000 to get 10 overnights a month. It's ludicrous. The Child Support, um, Child Custody Act has not been updated in 50 years. We're no longer in the June Cleaver days. Veterans coming back from war are often discriminated against in family court due to PTSD. Also, now we're dealing with the reargus. I probably did away with dinner prisons back in the 1800s. Somebody loses a job. UAW was on strike with General Motors this past fall. Six to eight weeks? I'm sure some people got behind child support. So we want to fill them in jail so their reargus keep adding up and can't afford to pay them? Take their license that they can't drive to work? And get them back to the, um, House Bill 4691? That was a rebuttal presumption of 50-50 for willing and able parents. My personal situation, I live a mile away from a children's mother. They had kids attending the same school. Just because I'm a man, why should I have to go spend that money to be, for children to have equal access with their parents? A lot of things can be done on the, on your justice level and the legislative level. And it won't cost a dime. And I've heard a lot of people talk about domestic violence. And it's, it's sad, um, you know, because a lot of the legitimate cases that we've heard tonight are getting overlooked for the silver bullet theory where these attorneys coach their clients to call the cops and say that you feared your husband, you're out of the house, you lose your kids, you may lose your job. And we've got to spend thousands and thousands of dollars. Family court system needs reform for the last 50 years from top to bottom. Thank you.
Cindy Dara?
I filed a case to try and get a new election for the charter vote in Detroit because I didn't feel it was properly advertised and, and less than a third of the people voted to open up for our 2012 charter. And actually 1300 more people vote, did not vote on our than voted yes. And only 176 more voted for yes than no. So there was less than two of the people. Well, I, I was, we were trying to get a quid pro quo from the Attorney General, that was Bill Shutey. And he wrote us a letter using, um, um, what was it? Um, Iron versus, uh, oh, Vol, oh, versus, um, Iron Border Bridge, uh, canvassers. And, and I read the case and then when I reread it, I realized, well, they had a tie vote, uh, in, in that case. So they didn't ever certify the original election. Then they had a recount because of this tie. Well, so the whole thing was that they did that recount within the 30 days of, uh, they, they also, I mean, asked for the quid pro quo within the 30 days from the recount. So, uh, the case that the Attorney General cited to say that we were too late was actually in our favor, not his. And then he waited, that recount was for our, uh, proposal, ours was on September 6th. He waited until October 12th, which was six days after the 30-day limit for the, uh, quid pro quo law. And, and he wrote us and said, well, we were too late. So when I filed it, I knew, I didn't depend on him because I knew that he probably turned down our quid pro quo request or the Attorney General would. So I did, uh, I tried to file my own case. Well, it took, I filed the first one within the 30 days. But I was rejected and it took me four times of trying to file before they would finally accept the case, then it's over the 30 days. And I tried to serve Bill Shutey because he was one of the, and I, you know, was trying to sue the city and the county at, uh, in the city clerk, um, the city council too. Because I felt they were, uh, not informing the public of something that's critically important when you're voting on your constitution. And it didn't, by the way. City council did not mention it until, uh, one week before 500 signatures were due if you wanted to run for the commission. And then they only, uh, two more times, May 1st was the last date that they even mentioned that it's going to be on the ballot and the ballot was on October 7th. But my question is this. They, uh, I served the Attorney General's office on, in the Cadillac building. They said, we can't accept it. So I said, well, just send it up to Lansing. And then I nailed a return receipt. Well, the court refused all of my services because I put it into one bundle. But I had return receipts, these, I had the, you know, the complaint and the summons. And they, uh, that follows the mission of court rules. Well, I, I guess I violated the, the e-filing rules because I put them all in one bundle. And, you know, instead of putting them in separate PDFs and dragging the PDFs to the bottle. Well, I think that's outrageous. Then I was going to try an appeal. And I go down and look at the court record in the basement and they blacked out the two public comments that I made to the city council in the evening and I, I, I wrote it out as well as made it. Took a picture with my phone and I put that one. And then the next day I went to another committee meeting to, to ask them to do something about it. They blacked that out in the court record in the basement. And I, I think, I, I just want to say one more thing. I've got a friend who got beat up by the police in front of the King Mac Building for trying to go in to follow, um, she was trying to avoid him. And she has a bicycle, so she's carrying all her stuff with her because she didn't have any place to put it. They beat her up. Now, she's gone to court. They dismissed it first time.
Cindy?
It's Cindy. Did not show up. Then, then they reinstated the case and this new judge.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but we.
She's never missed a date. She's always gone to court and there's no reason given why they want all of a sudden to put a bond on her and, and hit her. And then they're, they're, they give no reason. And, uh, they, they refused the motion that her lawyer tried to file in order to find out why the hell they're trying to put a bond on her. And I mean, what it is.
Cindy, can you please finish your.
Like fascism, when you see a cop. I saw the videos and I want you guys to look at those videos because that is scary and reminded me of Germany. There's some kind of a stoppage.
Can you please finish your.
The way, and the other thing is, the police department have a contract that after two years, they wipe all this bullshit off of their record and then they get their promotion.
Cindy, there's a lot of people that still want to talk. Please finish your comments on a comment card in the back.
I want to tell you that you've got to do something with.
Jacob Khan is the next speaker.
They're right. They're robbing people. And I can talk to somebody.
Cindy, there's a lot of people that still want to talk. Please. Jacob Khan?
Good evening, Your Honor, thank you for this opportunity. It's a really interesting forum. Something that I've noticed lately in the district courts is I see a lot of objections to garnishments. And ironically, and I know the judges are in a tough position, but ironically, I frequently hear a judge say on an objection to garnishment, go get in the tray. But the issue a lot of the defendants have when they're up there objecting to a garnishment is that all of their funds, I'm talking about a non-periodic bank garnishment, is that all of their funds are tied up by the garnishment. And a lot of the time, it's very hard to get an attorney to represent you for an objection to garnishment or, you know, to attack an underlying judgment when all of your funds are tied up and it looks like those funds are going to go to the plaintiff in the case anyway. I understand that there's not resources to give every single pro-sacral an attorney. Um, somebody who spoke before me mentioned triaging things and, and particular instances where somebody could really benefit from legal help. Um, prioritizing those. I think when people have all of their money tied up, in the case that I just witnessed recently in Jonesville County where a gentleman came in and he said, my wages are being garnished at the statutory maximum of 25%. And my employer requires mandatory direct deposit, which is common now. Direct deposit didn't exist when the garnishment rules were written. And he says, now my wages are being garnished to 25% and the plaintiff is not where I bank. And now they've garnished, uh, a non-periodic bank garnishment and pulled all the money out of my checking account. So my wages are actually being garnished at an effective rate of 100% and my employer has mandatory direct deposit. That's something that the legislature and the court could not have foreseen when the garnishment rules were written. On the other hand, I'm very sympathetic to plaintiffs who have a valid judgment. I understand that judges are in a difficult position in this kind of scenario. But I do think if we work to triage legal aid in terms of the civil docket, that's. that's especially important one where people could really benefit from representation. Thank you for the opportunity to come.
Charlene. Charlene Snow.
Good evening. Good evening, Your Hones. Um, my name is Charlene Snow. I'm an attorney with United Community Housing Coalition. And I'm the Director of the United UCHD NLS Housing Project. After, I'm speaking on the right to counsel and the importance of that. Um, I wanted to say that in two thousand seventeen, thirty thousand cases were filed in thirty-six district court and in one more tenant division. Eighty-three percent of the landlords were represented, four percent of the tenants were represented. Um, and further, I wanted to say that Detroit is kind of in a crisis with respect, um, to evictions, particularly compared to other cities in the country. Um, in, um, number of evictions per hundred renter houses. In Chicago, the number of evictions is four. In the state of New Jersey, the number of evictions is four. Philadelphia, eight. New York City, eleven. Detroit, twenty-two. There are some unique factors in Detroit that affect evictions and people being evicted. And that's the lack of adequate, adequate resources for family spacing housing. The lack of adequate shelter systems. Deplorable housing conditions throughout the city and a number of the, um, properties not being registered with the city, even though there is an ordinance and the city is working on that. A number of houses not being registered and not having certificates of compliance. So the, the repair issues and the conditions of those houses are particularly bad. Um, community impact from light and tax foreclosure epidemic, as well as mortgage foreclosure epidemic, has really decreased the number of rentable houses, rentable units in the city. Um, the, which is, and the shortage of affordable housing for low-income people. Um, there are significant impacts on the city of Detroit's school system for people who are homeless. University of Michigan recently did a study on that. Um, the, um, poverty law project, I think it is. And there's increasing rents throughout the city due to gentrification. Um, the right to counsel has been established in a number of cities and states around the country. New York City, Newark, San Francisco, LA County, Philadelphia, Cleveland, Denver, state of Massachusetts, state of New Jersey, Washington DC. It's being considered in Baltimore, state of Minnesota, counties and upstate New York, state of Connecticut. I would recommend that the task force look at, um, for further information, www.civilrighttocounsel.org, stout.com, right to counsel, and our office, uchdetroit.org has a film of tenants who, um, talk about the importance of them having a children. Thank you.
Diane Ferguson.
Hello. My name is Diane Ferguson and I drove approximately two hours to get here. Am I speaking English enough? No, it's speaking English. All right, my name is Diane Ferguson and I drove, uh, two hours to get here. My case started with a criminal case. I was a marijuana caregiver. And I was raided by a St. Clair County Drug Task Force Officer, federal agent who had cancer with a marijuana card, and a gun. That case led me into a civil case. I hired an attorney by the name of James D. Wines out of Ann Arbor, Michigan, to represent my criminal case. He committed fraud throughout my representation, which started less than thirty days after representing me. He started charging us for services that were not rendered. He was a fifty-year experience attorney. He sued me and my husband in civil court for his fees. During that court case, that civil case, which was in San Juan County, which is where I live, I proved that he committed fraud. I also demanded that I have a trial from the beginning. In my answer to his response, I demanded that I have a trial. I ratched out to legal aid. Numerous attorneys I called, not a one, but did my case. Because nobody must go against their father. I believe, I believe my appeal, because I appealed the St. Clair County and the San Juan County. And, uh, Your Honor McCormick, I think you possibly heard both of those. They went and granted him his summary disposition the day shortly after I stood up and proved that he had committed fraud for my entire bill. He was also an hour late from a trial. On other things I won't go into, stick to the civil. After that judgment that he was granted, he sent out a repossession unit to come to my home and raid me again. From there, I filed court case and plant injunction to stop the option. It was denied. I went to Washoe County, filed a lawsuit against him. The day that I showed up for court, which no court date was ever granted. The day that I showed up for court, I was dragged in a bathroom, never given the opportunity to speak or had my trial, nothing. It was just granted to him again. The level of corruption. I come here today to say, where do we go with this? Allow due process. When someone says I want a trial, they are entitled to that trial. I also wanna speak on expungement. Expungement does not go far enough when it comes to medical marijuana. They are expunging cases left and right. Well, I'm a two-time felon from that one incident with that drug task force officer. So expungement don't work for me. It's not granted because I'm a one-felonny. But I sold a police officer with cancer who had a marijuana patient, tired, an ounce of marijuana. And I don't believe that the state, I could be selling marijuana to pay their bills while continuing to put us in prison for selling marijuana to pay our bills. The law is no longer equal to all of us. I don't know where it flipped. We're upside down in the law. I don't know where that happened. But if that's where we're at, we're trying to crawl ourselves out of it.
Diane. My mic doesn't work, but you are out of time. I'm sorry. Thank you for your feedback. Next up, Michael Robinson.
Now, the judges, the eleven years time to speak. Spent six years in, in penitentiary and I was in six different institutions because I couldn't get along with the system. I was in the hole on one occasion, I'm four hundred and forty-five days. I spent totally over a year altogether in the hole. But I went to prison for a crime that I did and I know I was guilty of. And I have friends that's incarcerated. One, he's been incarcerated for twenty years, another for twenty-nine, another for thirty-two years for crimes that they did not commit. And as much as I hated being in prison, can you just imagine someone there for a crime that they did not commit? And I currently work as the Vice President with a group called Survival Speak. Their objective is to help people who have been wrongly convicted to get out of prison. But if we really wanna try to fix a broken system, instead of putting Band-Aids on a system where we know that there's a major problem, we're gonna have to change the entire infrastructure. And let's fix and stop playing with the system, let's really fix it. I, um, believe that, that if we start monitoring and overseeing the judges in the courtroom, then we can actually fix it. Because, I guess all of you are seated on African-American mail, and I've been there all my life. And, um, if, um, John Polowski and Michael Robinson committed the same crime, some people, John Polowski is gonna get a stop on the rest of Michael Robinson is gonna get more time.
What'd you say?
And we talked about domestic violence, we talked about housing, we talked about,
Family court.
Family court, we talked about all kinds of things, but we're not talking about a racist system in the courtroom. And that need to really be investigated. Because if it don't be repaired, it's gonna continually go on and on. Thank you.
Kristin Milanovich.
Good evening. My name's Kristin and I appreciate you guys having this. Um, I've done a lot of research over the last year. I was involved in an automobile accident three years ago. And been on quite a roller coaster since then. Um, I noticed a lot wrong in the system and there needs to be, um, a few PSAs done out there and some education in the courtrooms, especially for those, um, serving jury duty. I did notice in my research, there is a lot more available, um, on the west side of the state than here on our side. Southeastern Michigan, there is definitely lacking a lot of the services that I've seen available over there. One of the issues is IME doctors and the auto insurance. Auto insurance here, we all know, very expensive. I, um, wrote everyone all my reps before they made the last change this last year, begging them not to do so, along with many others. All they did, I feel, was help out the lawyers and the auto insurance companies more than they already need. I was told by not only my attorney, the defense attorney and the judge here in Wayne County, that it's not worth going to court over. Take the twenty thousand dollars they're offering you, which let me tell you, I had already gone through my entire retirement and beyond that, um, and be happy. You don't wanna go to court because our juries here have no sympathy for you. They feel that your insurance is just gonna go up some more if they're to grant you anything. Um, problem with the IME doctors is, our laws are very unjust when it comes to them. You're not allowed to request a female doctor. You're not allowed to request anyone to be able to go in the room with you. You're not allowed to request audio or video recordings. I turned my IME doctor into the state to get a one-page, two-paragraph, very small letter back stating, thank you, but we're not going to investigate. They make a large sum of money as a side job working for these auto insurance companies. Thank you. I also just quickly wanted to mention, anybody out there who got in a car accident or anyone else you love, most of our cars now, they have black boxes on them, just like the planes. Request your data before you sign off on your car to your automobile insurance company because they do not have your back. Thank you.
Matthew McHale.
Hi, my name is Matthew McHale. I'm an attorney. I practice commercial law, but I've been interested in getting into the pro bono area. One of the, one of the things I'd like for the court to consider is implementing a mandatory pro bono requirement. I understand that other courts have considered it, probably in their professional misconduct and most have denied. Um, but I think it might be something that we can explore, we can explore and possibly find, uh, a hap, a happy medium ground, whether it's in certain areas of the, areas of the law or in certain, uh, general topics available for lawyers to discharge to choose their pro pro activities. I think that there might be, uh, greater opportunities in the court. I know it's already taken much action to publish kind of guidance for corporate legal departments like the one in which I serve. I also think that during, any of the comments here today, there is a fundamental, uh, lack of, I think, integrity deemed or being considered by these, uh, potential clients. That they are not, without the legitimacy of the professional practice, we might lose our kind of authority to act and pursue justice in general. If a mandatory requirement, I think that the court could at least send the message that it's doing its very utmost to compel attorneys to further participate in justice. Thank you.
David Robinson.
Hi, I'm David Robinson. I'm from the Wayne County Stu Resolution Center. Thank you for that, by the way, because that segue you exactly into what things I'm looking for. Um, as you're aware, Your Hones, uh, we're one of the eighteen centers around the state that's, uh, community resolution program. And, you know, I've heard a lot of discussions tonight about the different litigations and the different, uh, issues people have in trying to find resolutions to their disputes. And not to admonish any attorneys in here or disappoint any attorneys in here, but mediation is a legitimate, uh, means of people finding a resolution without having to go the litigation route. Now granted, our center does about three thousand mediations a year. Many of those happen to be referrals from different courts because, you know, if they're able to resolve a matter before it comes back in, especially the family court here in Third Circuit, they've been phenomenal with referral cases for us. And I think that we make some serious impact that allow the court time to actually concentrate on cases, many of which were like the ones we heard about tonight. Um, what I'm hoping that the, that you as justices and, and ideas you can take away from here is, just like he said, our biggest resource, because our model is a volunteer mediation model, we have trouble attracting people to be volunteers. Especially when the law requires that they take a forty-hour, uh, mediate, even attorneys. If they haven't had the training, they have to take this forty-hour general civil and then the forty-eight-hour domestic violence. Which, by the way, little plug, we have trainings, our, our center has trainings in March coming up for the general civil and domestic is in April. And please, be, uh, you know, anybody that's interested in being a mediator, please contact me ASAP so we can get you into the program and get you registered for the classes. But what we do is, you understand, I don't think people realize that in the mediation. But what we do, as you understand, I don't think people realize that in the mediation field, we have the general civil where we do pro-abors, we do small claims, we do landlord tenants, we do all these different types of programs. That many of them were mentioned tonight as being issues for the courts and issues for the tenants. And we'd like to be that relief valve for some of our courts so that we can do those things. We also do domestic cases, as I mentioned, but, you know, the state is now, you know, they're kind of getting with the younger generation's ideals of, we now have online mediation. It's called MI Resolve. It's a platform where people can actually, it can be two neighbors and they can register online and have it mediated online, over their phones, over, you know, however they communicate. So just please, I have some literature there. Anybody that's interested in learning more about mediation and the services of our center, please come and ask. Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name is Daisy Marshall and I thank you for this opportunity to address my experience with the injustice in probate court. Over the past year, I've learned just how prevalent abuse and exploitation are in Michigan probate courts. I was falsely accused of using my aunt's funds for personal gain without looking at records that I had readily available in the courtroom. Then her durable power of attorney and will were declared null and void despite Michigan Civil Law Number 700.5313 and 700.5106, which set forth a prioritized list of persons who could be appointed, with first priority being the ward and second priority being a family member. I said both categories. Based on that lie that the conservator told in probate court, I was assessed $9,364 under the pretext that after they, I had submitted all of the bank records showing how the money was used, I would be reimbursed. That was March of last year. Nobody has addressed that issue and I've sent documents all over. On the other hand, the court-appointed conservator has not been held accountable for how she has failed to pay bills, even medical bills. My aunt has gotten shut-off notices, she's gotten collection threats and letters and phone calls to my home. She has even collected, this is the conservator, she has collected at least $1,000 per month for the past six months while my aunt is in a nursing home. She has refused to cooperate with the nursing home to get my aunt Medicaid qualifying. Wayne County Probate Court, and from what I'm hearing and from what I've learned, and I've learned more about probate than I ever wanted to know, has licensed some of these people to steal with impunity. While my aunt and I must pay for lawyers to descend in a rigged system, it is difficult, if not impossible, for us to trust a system of government that allows judges, lawyers and politicians to turn a blind eye to this kind of evil. Thank you.
Gary Kaufman?
Hey Gary.
Hello. The first thing I want to do is express appreciation for the state by our Michigan for going above and beyond call of duty and establishing so many innovative programs to advance the cause of justice, particularly the spring pro bono workshop that I participate in annually, even though I'm not a lawyer. I think there is virtually nothing more important for a strong country than having well-written laws and good judges. I myself have been focused on the judiciary since the age of five. And that's because my father was the late Charles Kaufman, who sat on the Wayne County Circuit Court bench for 30 years and was widely known for his extensive legal knowledge, his attitude of fairness, and also for turning down and reporting $100,000 bribe attempt from organized crime sources. I myself was a very dedicated parole probation agent for the Michigan Department of Corruptions, working an oversized caseload with an office just one block away from here. Presently, I'm establishing a 501(c)(3) to help victims of abuse, particularly victims of our predatory guardianship system, which is right now in the process of purging inculpatory files, which are disappearing at a fast rate. I'm also concerned with the victims of our predatory psychiatric hospitals, which virtually 100% of the time, and I know this from serving on various committees under the Office of Recipient Rights, these hospitals will cover up complaints of abuse virtually 100% of the time and the abuse is rampant. And the reason they do that is because they know they can get away with it, which is just like the guardianship system. The laws have so many loopholes, big enough to drive a truck through. If anybody, I am setting up a charity to publicize and expose in a tactful diplomatic way, working within the system, these various flaws in our system. And if anybody wants my sympathy and possible help with any matter involving abuse, I'm available 24/7 at 248-933-7964. I'm also an avid court watcher and as such, I think I'm well-positioned to express an opinion on who the best judges are in southeast Michigan and also who the worst are, but concentrating on the best. I want to publicly praise for having every quality that a good judge should.
Gary, I'm sorry to cut you off. We do want to keep moving a long way up above...
34th District Court and Supreme Court Justice Beth Clement deserves particular praise for her courageousness.
So with the time limit, we have four more that we're going to have time to call. And if we do not have time to call you this evening, we do want to hear your feedback. And please either fill out a survey or just put your comments on the back of that survey or both. We really appreciate it. I'm going to call Lisa Daniels.
Hi, Your Honor. Well, the justice system is kind of messed up. For seven years, I've been a victim of violent crimes where two women beat me up and where I had an ex-girlfriend. I didn't have representation. I was in a hospital. Couple of years later, I had an ex-boyfriend continuously stalk me even with a PPO put on him. Recently, the judge did not extend the PPO, even though this man has driven by my house, went to my son's workplace, has sat at the end of my room, made false police reports saying he was never around. It all starts back in courts. It starts with the police. When the police write a report, it's messed up sometimes. Because when those girls attacked me, they were supposed to take me to the hospital. I didn't ask to go into a police car home. Sexual assault these days, sexual harassment, that's a big issue, especially with the dark or sex trafficking. I have no means to hire an attorney at all. I'm a single mom without, so how do I get the funds and how do I get the justice? Because for seven years, I haven't seen one part of any justice. And it's confusing and it's heartbreaking. I feel for the people that are sexually assaulted and abused because they don't have nowhere to go. You might go to common ground, you might go to Michigan Legal Aid. Well, I'm in the loop of Michigan Legal Aid. I can't get no help. They will direct you, but you do not get an attorney. Criminals get attorneys. Innocent people do not get attorneys. We're victims. So here we are with a system that doesn't protect the citizens of the United States. I'm the Pat Steen Dell, or Pat Steer, and my great-grandfather, God rest his soul, grandfather of Illinois, who has donated so much land back to the city of Detroit. I don't feel justice has been done even in the country. I mean, is this getting to the point where, I don't know. The system is flawed, the judges are corrupted, the police are corrupted. You know, it just goes on and on. I could say that there's a business owner in Waterford that just got busted for illegal gambling. I guarantee you won't do any time for that. That's a five-year minimum felony. So I understand why the courts can't get it together.
Thank you. Wendy Richards?
Hi, I'm Wendy Richards. I'm pro bono counsel at Miller Campfield. And part of my job is handling all the pro bono requests that come to the law firm. And we work at a law firm that's probably one of the biggest contributors of pro bono work. We definitely cannot keep up with all the requests. And it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking to tell somebody who calls us how we can't help them. So I spend much of my day trying to think about how we can sort of maximize the self-help options that are out there, obviously. Michigan legal help is amazing. We use it. We tell people to use it all the time. But I always think about, is there a way that the courts themselves can incorporate something similar to Michigan legal help in their own system? So is there a way that the courts can have one universal portal where someone can go in, especially in those areas that are mostly pro se concentrated, and they can actually fill out the forms for one system? Choose the commie, have it go to the right court, have it very simplified, very much in plain language, rather than having to go through so many different systems? Ideally, that they could file online, they can get a password in my dream world, and they could also get a calendar sent back to them. Particularly in those areas that can be streamlined, like uncontested divorce or someplace like that. I think that would make a huge difference and it wouldn't be all of the pro bono attorneys having this. They know the legal aid that just doesn't have the capacity to keep up. But I do want to commend the courts for all of the innovative changes that have happened. I'm so grateful for Limit Scope. And I do think that, speaking about pro bono, it would be great to have more people understanding that Limit Scope is a great way to contribute to pro bono side of the person with this book recently. I'd be happy to talk to them a little bit more. But ideally, if there's technological changes that can incorporate the great innovations that have happened in Michigan legal help on the next level, that would be fantastic. So, thank you.
Patrick Cooney?
Hi. I'm Patrick Cooney, Assistant Director for Detroit Partnership on Economic Mobility between poverty solutions of the University of Michigan and the City of Detroit. We fund faculty research that's applied in the city of Detroit. A recent study that we supported was one called "The Eviction Machine" by Josh Akers, who's an academic at the University of Dearborn. And basically it documents the process through which large amounts of foreclosure has led to bulk ownership and how those bulk buyers are often not very good landlords, at least, and resulting in high rates of evictions. The brief, which I dropped with someone back there to hopefully get in your hands, looks at, I think, two concrete solutions to try and incentivize evictions. The first, I think both of them center around the 36th District Court as well. The first is refusing to give standing to landlords filing eviction cases if they're not complying with the rental ordinance. I don't know if that's been mentioned yet today. Sorry I came in late. But it sounds like that would be kind of a major one in helping to reduce number of evictions in the city. And then the second one is ensuring that land contracts are actually honored as contracts rather than reverting to rental agreements, which we understand is a large concern as well. Those are the two things I wanted to say. Thanks so much for doing this.
Thank you. Sire, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Good to see you. Thank you, Your Honors, for coming to Detroit and listening to this. What I represent, I come from the Kitsch Law Firm. We're a large Detroit-based law firm. I'm also the pro bono coordinator for the firm. I'm also the chair of the Detroit Art Association Pro Bono Access to Justice Committee. We have a lot of lawyers in Detroit, in the metro Detroit area, who are interested in doing pro bono. Mr. McHale, now be a touch. The problem is, we have a lot of hesitance among the private counsel in getting involved in pro bono. The limited scope representation rules were tremendous. Those were a great advance. We need to find a way to continue pushing out the education on that so people get more comfortable with being able to take on a hearing, being able to take on just advising on motion or something like that to keep the scope limited because everybody's heard bad stories about getting involved in a pro bono case that becomes a time sink. So if we can expand the awareness of the limited scope representation as well as finding a way to provide additional training to the private counsel and incentivize the private counsel. I'm on the other side a little bit of the mandatory pro bono, but if there's some way to incentivize the pro bono where, say, on a hearing, if the attorney signs in in court saying that he's there on a pro bono matter, that that matter can get moved up the calendar a little bit so that the time commitment is a little bit less for that attorney who's there, private attorney on a pro bono matter. And as well as some other, if there is limited funding, like the right counsel ordinance, if there's some limited funding that's available that's in conjunction with the limited scope representation to ease the burden on small firms and sole practitioners, that they may be more willing to engage in pro bono or low-bono assistance so that they're not putting their practice at risk by assisting people with gaining access to justice. And the triage in referral programs would be a tremendous asset as well. There are a lot of services that are available, but if we can get private counsels that are more comfortable in participating in them, then we can expand the services that they do, we can coordinate them better and provide better access to justice. Thank you very much for the opportunity and I look forward to the report of the desk rooms.
We want to thank everybody who participated tonight. It is eight o'clock, so we are going to close up for the night. We do want to hear from any of you who did not get a chance to speak. You can fill out a comment card and we really will read all of those comment cards and anything else you leave for us. We are grateful for you sharing your stories, sharing your ideas. And we look forward to figuring out how Michigan can become a national leader in closing the civil justice gap. Thank you very much for being here.